This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you very much, Troy. Commissioners, are we ready to begin? All right, let's please come to order. Time now is 1:32. Welcome. This is the April 23rd Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Let's begin by inviting forward Reverend Kessler in order to give an invocation. Reverend?
Thank you. Margaret Chase Smith was a former U.S. Senator, and she said, "Public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly. It must be a complete dedication to the people and to the nation." And I thank each of you for serving us and others here, and let's pray for that end for them. God, we thank you for these people in public service, and I pray for them. Pray for them and their families, for the burdens they bury, the various stresses that are upon them. I pray even for today for wisdom, that they, under your authority, would be able to manage, give wisdom, give direction, make decisions, and help us all, both of this county and even broader, to have direction and to help people and even to share kindness. So we thank you for them. We pray for your guidance over today in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Kessler, for those words of wisdom and peace. Very much appreciated. If you all please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. In the board has proper jurisdiction over all matters.
Thank you, counselor. Do the commissioners have any disclosures for any items on this agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have none. Thank you.
Nor do I. Thank you, commissioners. Going to the ceremonies and proclamations for the day, and we have several today, we're going to start with a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County, Colorado. Jennifer D'Ambrosio, Community Programs Coordinator for Staff.
The request before you today is approval of a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month. Established in 1963, Older Americans Month is celebrated every May to recognize and honor the older adults in our communities. Recognizing Older Americans Month provides an opportunity for Douglas County to applaud the many contributions of our older residents and to promote programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. This resolution is brought forward by the Douglas County Older Adult Initiative, who is currently engaged in a community conversation with the county's older adults to understand what their needs are and how the county may better support them in the future. We would like to acknowledge the agencies who are participating in the leadership of the Older Adult Initiative. We would also like to acknowledge Douglas County's transportation and senior services partners that help our older residents stay engaged, independent, and connected in our community. If the members of the Older Adult Initiative and our service providers would stand and be recognized. Staff recommends approval of the resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Commissioner Teal has offered to read the resolution this afternoon.
And it would be my honor and privilege. I bring forward a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month. Whereas Douglas County, Colorado is home to an ever-increasing number of older Americans who improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas Douglas County recognizes that communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Douglas County recognizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connections on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. And whereas Douglas County recognizes the vital role that connectedness plays in supporting independence and aging in place by combating isolation, loneliness, and other issues. And whereas Douglas County remains steadfast in its commitment to ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, in conjunction with the Douglas County Older Adults Initiative, hereby proclaims that the month of May 2024 shall be commemorated as Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize and celebrate the contributions of our older citizens and help promote programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. Presented this 23rd day of April 2024 in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado, before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, and I heartily endorse the passage. Commissioner questions? Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize and acknowledge staff and the work of all those here in the gallery today. And for those listening online, you know, our senior adults are such a valuable treasure to our community. And every year that goes by, it seems like that average age just continues to go up. So those that are, you know, 65, 75, those are spring chickens now because, you know, everybody's living to over 100. But no, you know, we really think about the advances of modern medicine and the ability for older adults to continue contributing in such a significant way. And I have always appreciated how passionate Douglas County is about recognizing and respecting older adults. I would also like to recognize your work, George, with the Older Adults Initiative. That is your initiative, and you've taken the time, in addition to all of the committees you sit on, to go around this county and meet with older adults throughout the community to really listen and get a sense of where older adults are at. Really excited to hear about the recommendations and the opportunities to move this forward. And that would not be possible without your leadership and the leadership of those in this room. I see Marco. Marco's doing everything. Marco, you're leading on all levels, but many in this gallery have worked on this initiative. So thank you for that. I will be in support.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
You know, since I've been actively involved in the community once I left, retired from the State Patrol, I have always marveled at the older adults that are often in the room, often running the meetings that I'm in, listening to. And I see Gretchen up here. Gretchen is always involved, always cooking and bringing yummy stuff to meetings and parties. Did I just see Debbie walk in? Thought I saw Debbie from the Castle Rock Senior Center. You know, even if I mention the name Al Juan Stolen, there are many people here who are going to shake their head because Al was and his wife were just always everywhere trying to improve our community. And, you know, I'm not sure what our community would be like without our older adults because they have a lifetime of wisdom behind them, and they're no longer running around kids' and grandkids' places, and they have time to get involved in their community and help us. And I think one exciting thing I heard this morning at a breakfast I was at by the demographer, the state demographer, is that the biggest population growing in Douglas County is 65 and older. And that just means we're going to have more vibrant communities and more people sitting here in our meetings, helping us make decisions. And I think that's a good problem to have. So thank you, Gretchen, and everybody here who's worked on this, Allison, Tina. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry, but thank you for what you have done to celebrate our older adults.
Well, thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for your support for this. And Abe, thank you for the kind words. I'd like to open the floor now for a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and make your voice heard on this resolution? Ms. Fields, come on forward. Please state your name and tell us where you're from.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Marco Fields from Castle Pines. I also serve on the Douglas County Community Foundation Board of Directors, and it is absolutely my honor to be a part of this initiative. And I just want to take a minute and actually recognize the Douglas County staff that has really led on this. I think that they really need to be acknowledged. Sometimes an initiative with a lot of people and voices in the room is a little bit like herding cats and then talking to crickets, and they have just been phenomenal. And as somebody who has an aging mother who just today is entering hospice, we are really at a time that this conversation could not be more vital for this community, both as the older adults continue to age and then us, not so older, but getting older every day, adults are both aging as well as experiencing all of these issues with our parents in this sandwiched generation. So Commissioner Teal, thank you so much for your leadership on this. It's truly been an honor to be a part of it and to represent the Douglas County Community Foundation. And I think that as this grows and we can reach more people in our community, that this voice and these critical resources that our community needs are just going to continue to get better and that we will have more of that rich connection with our older adults and the younger generation and bringing the wisdom and the beautiful stories and traditions that our seniors and our aging adult community members bring. So thank you, Commissioner Teal.
And thank you, Ms. Fields. Appreciate your comments very much. Is there anyone else?
Could I just add a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Marco, you just mentioned that your mother's going into hospice. Let me tell you, having been the coroner for four years, I saw the marvelous work that hospice does in a very difficult time, and so our prayers are with you. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and make public comment on this matter? Ma'am, come on forward. Give us your name and tell us where you're from.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Thiessen. I'm the Director of Operations at Aging Resources of Douglas County. On behalf of ARDC and many of the older adults that we serve, we have the privilege of serving, we just want to thank you for taking the time to make this proclamation today. We value your time and appreciate the recognition of all the older adults here in Douglas County and the strong contributions that they provide right here in Douglas County to make our county a great place to live. With those older adults and community partners, many of which are in this room, we just thank you for the support in raising awareness and celebrating so many older adults that very well deserve to be celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to come forward and make public comment on this matter? Seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anybody online who would like to make public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board, I'll just take a moment. You know, ARDC does and has done a great job in this county for a generation, maybe a generation and a half. And the reality is, we know there's a lot of things that the county is doing well for our older adults. We know it. We hear it from our partners. We hear it from our federal partners. We hear it from the state. And yet, my motivation to bring this forward as an initiative for the county was I still would occasionally get stopped in King Supers or Safeway by an older adult who has lived here in Douglas County longer than me. I came to Douglas County in 1997 when I left the Army. And these are individuals that have been here for even longer than that. And I'd always hear something that suggested we could probably be doing something better. Maybe not a big thing to be doing better, but just a little thing, but a big thing for that person. And after hearing enough of those, I thank you, colleagues, for supporting me when I brought it forward, that this is something we can continue to work on. We shouldn't rest on our laurels. These, so many, when we did our listening sessions last year, so many of the residents who were coming in to speak to us, they didn't move here last year. They didn't move here a year ago. You know, they moved here 30 years ago, 40 years ago. They've been here. They've been paying their taxes, but they've been a part of our communities. And so their voices deserve to be heard, and their contribution to our county deserves to be recognized and treasured. I turn back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board? I do advocate the adoption of this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I do have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? In that case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimous. Well, we should give each other a round of applause. Moving to our next item, it's a resolution proclaiming April 28th through May 4th as National Small Business Week and presenting on behalf of staff Lauren Pulver, Planning Supervisor.
I am the Commissioner, Lauren Pulver, with Community Development. In recognition of National Small Business Week and recognizing the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center as 2024 National Small Business Center of the Year for Excellence and Innovation, this resolution is provided to proclaim April 28th through May 4th as Small Business Week. Unless a commissioner would like to read the proclamation, I am prepared to do so.
Please proceed.
A resolution proclaiming Small Business Week from April 28th to May 4th, 2024. Whereas, the resilience of American small businesses continues to drive America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years, fostering the competition and innovation that creates opportunities for families, workers, and neighborhoods. And whereas, small businesses are the backbone of communities and the American economy, employing more than half of our nation's workers, making parts and products in America to fuel supply chains and innovating and inventing the products of tomorrow. And whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture and enjoy new opportunities to build generational wealth. And whereas, National Small Business Week has been recognized every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, the 2024 National Small Business Development Center of the Year for Excellence and Innovation is the Aurora South Metro SBDC. And whereas, Douglas County joins in the national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the American economy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, hereby proclaim that April 28th through May 4th of 2024 shall be commemorated as Small Business Week.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pulver. Questions from the board?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lauren, for that presentation. You know, we had the opportunity to go to a breakfast this morning for the brand-new Douglas County Economic Development Corporation, which really marries all of the local mayors with our C-suite executives and then some of the really significant businesses throughout Douglas County. Some are as small as, you know, LaCinda's shop in Lone Tree, Cronelli's, which we know and love, up to Lockheed Martin, and they had some of their key executives there. But, you know, it's really the entrepreneurial spirit and the enterprise risk that is taken on by our small business leaders that make our county so great. So it's an honor to be in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Lauren, thank you for bringing this forward. We know that the biggest employer in our county are small businesses. And I am amazed at the number of people that I have come across who have two, three, four, five employees, and they're helping put food on the table for those families. So it really is a testament to the small businesses that make our community great. So they kind of are unsung heroes. So thank you for this, Lauren.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it's, I was shocked, actually, in my time in municipal office, to the first time I learned exactly how many jobs here in the county, in here in our municipalities, are small business jobs. You know, and I see several small business owners in the audience today. Having run a small business myself, but with a nationwide market, I guess I never had an appreciation for the work that small businesses do, both serving our local market here in the county, in the Denver region, maybe just in the state, but also businesses like my own, where there were many times I was the only person on the payroll, and yet I was doing business around the country and up into Canada. So I think this is a right and proper resolution for us to adopt. I do advocate for the passage. But prior to taking board action, I would like to open the floor for any public comment on this resolution. Would anyone like to come forward and make comment? Seeing none in the room, Troy, is there anyone to make public comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Very good. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board for further comments or action.
I have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming April 28th through May 4th, 2024 as National Small Business Week.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimous. Thank you, Lauren. Next item up is a motion, excuse me, is a resolution recognizing the work of public service. Let me attempt to speak English. Is a resolution recognizing the work of public servants. Kristen Kohlstedt, Assistant Director of Human Resources, presenting for staff.
Hello, Kristen Kohlstedt. It's an honor to be here today. I am prepared to read the resolution unless one of you commissioners would like to do so.
Please proceed.
Okay. The Board of Douglas County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, a resolution recognizing the work of public servants. Whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These servants do the work that keeps our communities thriving. Whereas, some public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. Whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people in local communities across the United States. Whereas, here in Douglas County, our public servants help you get a marriage license or a passport, register your vehicle, clear your roads of snow, keep your parks and open spaces beautiful for recreation, provide resources for those in need, and investigate crimes. They run your elections, help you renew your driver's license, build new roads and bridges, inspect buildings, serve your schools as school resource officers, and keep your neighborhoods safe. They are your neighbors, and day in and day out, they provide the diverse government services expected by the American people with efficiency and integrity. Whereas, without these public servants, at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Whereas, in Douglas County, more than 1,400 employees work as a team every day to make long-lasting impact on the lives of the people we serve. Whereas, each year, the President and Congress designate the first full week of May, May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week. And National Police Week is May 12th through the 18th, and National Public Works Week is May 19th through the 25th. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, proclaims May 5th through 11th as Public Service Recognition Week, May 12th through 18th as National Police Week, and May 19th through 25th as Public Works Week, encouraging us all to recognize the ways public employees enhance our communities. Passed and adopted this 23rd day of April 24, or 2024, in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado.
Thank you, Director Kohlstedt. To the board for comments and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Kohlstedt. You know, I look out into this gallery and I see so many public servants. And, you know, forgive my bias, but in Douglas County, I think we not only do it great, but we do it the best. You know, my colleagues from the city of Lone Tree, where I call, you know, home every single day, you all dedicate your lives to making that city great. I mean, we see law enforcement in the back. We have the number-one level of SROs of any other county in the state, and the highest level of investment in public safety, $20 million this last year in public safety. So it's significant. I see our wildfire mitigation specialists. Oh, my goodness. I mean, the number-one potential threat affecting our county. The good news you'll never hear, your home did not burn up this year. And we all take that for granted, but, you know, when you think about the people in Boulder County who suffered from the Marshall Fire, they remember, you know, when a fire took over and they didn't have the resources they may have necessarily had in place in order to prevent that. But, you know, all of you do such great work. Sherri Davis in the Clerk's Office, Vice President of First Impressions. You'll never get a driver's license faster than the Douglas County Clerk's Office, and you guys do such a great job. But there's a lot of unseen, too. I mean, Steve Schultz with our Parks Department, I mean, you go to Highland Heritage Park, and it's good luck finding a weed, even now. I mean, it is just gorgeous. It's absolutely gorgeous. And the unseen public service in terms of the mental health initiative and the work that Barbara Drake has led and spearheaded for so many years. Those that have suicidal ideation at 4:00 in the morning can get help because of the work and effort that Barbara and her team, Laura's and Conny is probably here, so there she is, you know, have been doing forever. And we do that together as a county. I was in private practice as a lawyer for many years, and, you know, lawyers do okay financially, but I will tell you, I've never received a paycheck better than the smiles on the faces of citizens in this county. So thank you. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you. You know, I think one of, I've been fortunate to have many different roles in my life, and being a public servant as both a coroner and a commissioner, and seeing the great work and the improvement in the quality of life for the citizens of Douglas County that our staff provide, really has been very satisfying. And during the years I worked as a state trooper, it was very different for law enforcement than it is now. So I'm not comparing what I did to what you did. I think what law enforcement does now is very, very different and much, much more difficult. But I think a lot of people do use public service as a way to give back, as a primary job, but there's a level of satisfaction. And I'd just like to thank everybody who works in the public sector because I think the majority of them are really good-hearted people who are doing the best they can. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. As for myself, I, you know, I began my adult life in the military, and the paychecks did not start large, but they were steady, obviously. And, of course, in the military, there are different motivators for service, but, you know, if you wanted to attend to your financial well-being, well, you worked for the next promotion. And I found it a little disconcerting when, and disorienting, when I left the military and began my life as a businessman. And it took me a little while to get the clue that, hey, if you want to get paid more, just work harder. Just work harder, find that next customer, line it up. And it became something I was very, very comfortable with for many years. And it is, it was something I was never going to do personally, to return to public service for many years, because why would I do that to myself? Why would I put myself on a single paycheck? Of course, I too heard the call back to service of the community and am here now, but at the same token, it's very different to be sitting up here and calling myself a public servant when I know we have many, many employees, and they do not not necessarily earn anything close to what I do. And yet, they're dedicated, they come in every day, and all they ask for is that steady paycheck. And hopefully, the least we can do is return a little recognition. And so I do speak in favor of adopting this resolution. But prior to action by the board, I'll open it up for any public comment. If anyone would like to make public comment on this matter, and I see Clerk Davis standing up and striding forward. Our Douglas County Clerk and Recorder, Sherri Davis, from Castle Rock. So you don't have to introduce yourself and tell us where you're from, but please share your comments.
Well, first of all, hello, everyone. And I want to speak to you on behalf of the Clerk and Recorder's Office and our 100 employees. And we sincerely thank the board for this acknowledgement. Our team is committed to serving our citizens with excellence, integrity, efficiency, and innovation. Whether you're renewing your vehicle registration, applying for a marriage license, or voting in an election, our Clerk and Recorder employees are here to make sure our citizens' experience are the best that they can be. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing our amazing Douglas County employees and helping us celebrate Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Davis. Very much appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Seeing none in the room, turning to Troy. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve a resolution recognizing the work of public servants.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimous. Our final item in our ceremonies and proclamations for today is a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Loris Encone, Mental Health Initiative Coordinator, on presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Loris Encone for staff. Before the board today, as Commissioner Teal has mentioned, is a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental Health Awareness Month was established by Mental Health America in 1949, which is really astounding when you think of the stigma that has so long surrounded mental health and substance use disorder. The intent at the time and still today was to elevate mental health, raise awareness, educate the public about mental health conditions, and reduce the stigma associated with the conditions that impact so many people in the United States and is a leading cause of disability worldwide. Public recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month is a reminder that everyone has mental health and the potential for poor mental health, regardless of income, zip code, race, gender, politics, or religious affiliation. It's also recognition of hope and help in hard times, and an affirmation of commitment to fostering the conditions that all people may be well. I am happy to read the resolution unless Chair, Commissioner Teal, or a member of the board would like to read the resolution into the record.
Is there any member of the board who would like to read the resolution?
All right.
Please proceed.
Resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is part of overall health and is something we all have, whereas mental health conditions are common in the United States with over 20% of U.S. adults and 17% of U.S. youth age 6 to 17 experiencing a mental health problem. And whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental health conditions begin by the age of 14 and three-quarters by the age of 24. And whereas long delays, on average 10 years, but sometimes decades, occur between the time of symptoms' first appearance and when individuals get help. And less than half of adults and approximately half of youth experiencing a mental or behavioral health condition each year receive treatment. Whereas suicide ranked as the eighth-leading cause of death in Colorado in 2022, and remains the number-one cause of death among Colorado youth and young adults. And in 2020, 51% of men and 68% of women in Colorado who died by suicide had a known mental health condition. And whereas in 2023, over 70,000 Douglas County adults, or 18.3%, reported poor mental health, meaning 14 or more days out of the last 30 days, their lives were impacted due to poor mental health. And whereas the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative, also known as DCMHI, was established 10 years ago in 2014 under the leadership of the Board of County Commissioners to address mental health system gaps and is currently represented by over 50 organizational members dedicated to systems change and improvements in mental health and behavioral health outcomes in Douglas County. And whereas the DCMHI launched the Community Response Team Program seven years ago in May 2017, and since then has served more than 7,500 unique individuals, prevented 1,430 unnecessary trips to the emergency department for mental health crisis, prevented 589 jail bookings, released 4,200 law enforcement officers back to service, and has saved over $10.4 million in fire emergency medical services, emergency department, and jail costs alone. And whereas the Community Response Team now has nine teams, including two youth-specific teams, serving the entire county every day of the week with 360 hours of service availability. And whereas the DCMHI launched the Care Compact in 2020 to provide care coordination for adults with complex mental health, substance use disorder, intellectual and developmental disabilities, and unmet basic needs, and which has now served over 120 adults, resulting in reductions in the use of crisis and emergency services. This spring, DCMHI will launch the Youth Care Compact. And whereas the DCMHI is collaboratively, is collaborative and actively working on multiple strategies to improve mental health network of care, fill gaps, and address the persistent stigma that surrounds mental health conditions and substance use disorders. DCMHI has aligned with behavioral health promotion and injury prevention priorities in the Douglas County Health Department's 2023 to 2026 Prevention Plan, and looks forward to programming collaborations within the 23rd Judicial District. And whereas, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners has dedicated over $9 million of the county's $68.2 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding to mental and behavioral health programming, including investments in veterans' mental health services, and all-ages walk-in crisis center, and child and adolescent crisis stabilization unit, suicide prevention, expansion of the Community Response Team and Care Compact programs, community education, men's and veterans' mental health, and a funding contribution to implement the 988 Crisis and Support Line. And whereas, the DCMHI supports and encourages early identification and treatment, which can make a difference in successful management and mental illness and recovery, maintenance of mental well-being, and learning the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it's needed, engagement of every citizen and community in ending the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help, and public education and civic activities, which can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 1st through May 31st, 2024, as Mental Health Awareness Month, to shine a light on mental health conditions, fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equitable access to care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Encone. Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, just hearing those statistics again is completely overwhelming. I don't know if it is for all of you, but when you think about those diversions and the $10.4 million that have been saved by the Mental Health Initiative, by frankly investing in co-response and ensuring that people don't end up in jails and end up in emergency rooms, but they're getting the mental health care that they need. I am just so proud of both of my colleagues and the work that we've done together as a county with the Mental Health Initiative to fund and support mental health in our community. And we could not be better served in Douglas County by public servants like Loris Encone and Barbara Drake and Maggie Cooper and your entire team. Your partnerships have been taken on, not just by the county, but in a region-wide effort and statewide, frankly, to address mental health. A lot of people don't know this, but, you know, even the Heart Team and the Homeless Initiative was modeled after the co-response team in the Mental Health Initiative. And I think my greatest moment in this arena was working with you all to make sure that the 988 Mental Health Line got established nationally. And that was an effort with Congress and the state. And today, here we are, and anyone can call that 988 Mental Health Line. I think it's really important to also reduce the stigma associated with mental health. And I always say, 100% of us have mental health. And we all need those things and do those things to make sure that our mental health is okay. I love to work out. That helps me a lot. My church helps me out a lot. I am in therapy once a week. I use BetterHelp.com. I'm not being paid by them, but I recommend that because we all have mental health. And just as a representative, I want to be out there to say, hey, it helps. It's a great thing. We all need it. And having those check-ins can really help us be better at what we do every day. So thank you for helping us raise awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you. Laura, you have done such an amazing job with this initiative. Barbara, Leandra, everybody on the team. I'm just going to talk for a minute about the journey that led me to be here. When I retired from the State Patrol, I was looking for something to use my talents and skills, and I got an email from someone saying, "The State Health Department is looking for someone to research homicides and suicides." And I thought, nope, and I deleted it. And then a week later, that email is in my email box again. And I'm like, okay, God, I know I deleted it, but I will call. And I called CDPHG, and I met with Dr. Holly Hedegaard. And we talked, and she said, my gosh, you are exactly what I'm looking for. The state of Colorado just received a grant from the federal government. We are the seventh state in the entire country to be funded to research homicide and suicide. And this program, called the National Violent Death Reporting System, is patterned after a NHTSA program, which is federal transportation called FARs, which is the Federal Accident Reporting System or the Federal Analysis Reporting System. That reporting system started in the 60s to figure out ways to reduce car crash deaths. That's where seatbelts came from. That's where airbags came from. So the CDC had gone to Congress and said, "We're losing too many people to homicide and suicide. Let's do what we did with car crashes." So Colorado was the seventh state to be funded, and I needed to build the database to work with 246 law enforcement agencies across the state of Colorado to collect the data on these homicides and suicides. And I had spent my whole career thinking I was saving so many lives as a state trooper. I was shocked to find out that we lost almost twice as many people to suicide than we did to car crashes. So for seven years, I met with law enforcement officers, with the State Patrol, with CDPHG. I also went to Georgia to meet with the CDC. And I was so humbled by what I learned about suicide. And that is what led me to run for county coroner. And I have a nonprofit called The Night with the Coroner. We raised money for suicide prevention. We sent a check to Second Wind Fund last week for $2,100 from an event we held last week. Suicide is preventable. Commissioner Lake talked about mental health. If people can understand that everybody has mental health problems, everybody has struggles, and it's okay to pick up the phone and call someone and talk to someone. There is a great website that the CDPHG has called ManTherapy.org. And it's a grumpy old doctor named Dr. Mahogany, and he's got a shotgun and a fishing pole and a golf club. And, you know, he just talks to men in man language. And you can fill out a survey on that website. It's not identified where it came from, but it is there to help people learn that they're not alone and that there's help, and there's a way to get hope. I'll just end with going to a scene of a horrible homicide-suicide in January of 2019 as the coroner. Was a young man who was struggling with mental health issues, and his mother was trying to get him help, and he fell through the cracks. And that case is what led to the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. After that happened in Douglas County, the commissioners came together. I was the coroner. I was not part of, I'm not taking credit for this because I did not do this. But those commissioners came together and said, damn it, this is Douglas County. We are going to stop this now. And when I became a commissioner in 2017 and learned that the first co-response teams were getting launched in May of 2017, I was so excited. And I have watched us grow from one team to nine. We now have two teams just dedicated to kids in school because 37% of the calls for the mental, for the coresponder teams were for kids. So we decided, let's just make teams that know how to deal with kids. I just applaud everybody in Douglas County that recognized this problem. Doug, you were a big part of this. Recognized this problem and has spent the money in focused ways to make a difference. And the next step is specialty courts for people who are on involuntary situations, so we can get them the help they need so they don't end up in the criminal justice system. I just think that everybody here who works on this process should be so proud of themselves because you know that you have saved lives. There are people who are walking around today who would not be here today if this mental health initiative had not started. So thank you for indulging me to be able to put all this on the record, because this really is the tip of the spear, what this county is doing. Thanks to the people out in the audience who have led it. So thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner. I became, harkening back to my time in municipal office, I think about the time I met with the police chief in Castle Rock, Jack Colley, for the very first time. And Jack told me, with no ambiguity, you know, there's not much of a crime problem in Castle Rock. There's not much of a crime problem in Douglas County. But there is a mental health problem. And too many times, we actually put that upon our police to handle. And so they're not dealing with criminality. They are dealing with mental health issues. And it was about that time that the Mental Health Initiative did start up in the county. And I always remember what Jack Colley said of, you know, if we don't handle mental health straight on as a health question and a health problem, then we handle it through the courts. We handle it with our police. And so I think that this is great, that we are proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness. Thank you again, Laura, for bringing forward this resolution and also talking about the great work that we have done with the Mental Health Initiative here in Douglas County. Before we bring it to the board for action, I'll open the floor for any public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this resolution? Yes, ma'am. Come on forward, Diane. You've got to tell us your name, where you're from, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Diane Smith. I'm the Director of the Douglas County Early Childhood Council. I just want to, I hadn't planned to speak today, but in listening to this initiative, it's so, or this resolution, it's so important and so near and dear to my heart. Working with the youngest children in our county, our most precious resource Working with the youngest children in our county, our most precious resource, I think about their mental health and that it's so unfortunate that we do have children who struggle, children who live in trauma, children who have been exposed to so many things that we worry about them. And I think that as a county, we do such amazing work supporting so many of our populations. I was here the month, when we did the resolution for the developmentally delayed population and the support that we give to that population. Unfortunately, because of the loss of stimulus funding in Douglas County, we're losing one of our mental health consultants that supports our early childhood programming in the county. And so I just want to, as we're thinking about mental health during the month of May, be thinking about, are there ways that as a county, we can also think about, how do we support the mental health of our youngest, most vulnerable children? And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Diane. And thank you for all the work that you do for the people of Douglas County. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment on this resolution? Seeing none in the room. Troy, anyone online who would like to make public comment on this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board, what is the board's pleasure?
I have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Second? There is a motion and a second. Any need for further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that resolution passes unanimous. Well, we had four resolutions, and we've got people who are already leaving. Let's, before they leave, let's give everyone a round of applause. Okay, colleagues, come, we are at the portion of our agenda for the consent agenda is presented. What is the pleasure of the board for actioning the consent agenda?
I would like to pull an item to discuss. It's item number I. And this is a resolution authorizing the issuance of property tax relief checks. As I was reading through the resolution, there is a whereas that says whereas, "Property tax relief checks will be valid for 90 days after the date of the issuance. Property tax relief checks will be marked valid for 90 days. Where a property tax, where a property tax relief check is not cashed, deposited, or otherwise negotiated within 90 days, the check will become invalid, the funds waived by the holder, and the funds returned to the county." I have some concerns about that statement, that if we have granted property owners taxpayer relief because they can't get the check or don't get the check to the bank within 90 days, they lose that benefit we gave them. I have some concerns about that, and I would wonder what you two think about that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for pulling that from consent. I think it's always wise for us to review those items in concert with staff and identify those that require additional discussion. No doubt, this board has worked diligently and hard, probably harder than any other county in terms of trying to educate the public and provide property tax relief. We know that Colorado faced the highest property tax year on record, so this is not insignificant. And anything we can do to provide additional relief to our citizens, I am certainly supportive of.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I am sympathetic to the concern. So I'd like to turn our attention to the county manager and Doug, or any member of staff that could speak to this. I guess my question would be, is this, and Martha Marshall, Douglas County Budget Director. Martha, I guess my question is, so the valid for 90 days, is this standard for the county? Or do we do this even with vendor checks that we are paying for renumeration? Or can you help us out, provide some details?
So, Martha Marshall for Budget Staff. This is standard language for most checks. This is a little bit different situation because the county does not, this isn't a, this isn't a tax credit. This isn't intended to be income. This is something that the commissioners put forth in the adopted budget for the welfare of property tax owners and that. So the 90 days is standard language for checks for, to make them, I've lost the word. But really, the reason why we're doing this is because we're going to be sending out close to 150,000 checks. And if those checks are not cashed, the tracking of that will be a fairly large burden on the Finance Department to be able to do that. This way, we kind of take that burden off. Because otherwise, they think about 150,000 checks, even if just 10,000 of them don't get cashed, or 10% of them don't get cashed, then our Finance Department is going to have to continually track those to determine, you know, when they will be cashed. And at some point, they do have to become stale dated and non-negotiable.
Second question that I have, is there, working with the bank, because it's, you know, actually, our bank, that's for the county, that is going to issue these checks through an electronic process that you've already briefed the board on. Do we have latitude from the bank in order to extend that validity beyond the 90 days?
Yes, we do have some latitude.
Okay. Okay, those were my questions. I don't know.
I would like to state that we probably do not want it to cross over fiscal years if we do want to extend that. So given that our checks are going to, our second batch of checks is going to be distributed in July, we probably want to keep that in mind if we set a longer date.
Mr. Chair. Please.
So Martha, you've been doing this a long time for the county. Do you have any staff recommendations? I think you heard the concerns of the board.
As I say, I would like to kind of recommend that we don't cross over fiscal years because that puts a lot more burden on our Finance Department once we cross years. With that being said, if we distribute checks in July, then, you know, that's five months that we could go to, to avoid that December 31 crossing over fiscal years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
So is it possible to indicate that the check is invalid after 1/1 of 25, but there is an understanding that if someone brings a check into the Treasurer's Office in March of next year and wants to get the amount of money back, they can get that amount of money back?
I would have to investigate that a little bit further. I could talk with the Treasurer's Office about that.
You know, I guess my only concern is, I would be interested in extending the validity and yet at the same time, you know, you get a check, you know, cash it or don't cash it. I mean, it's kind of always, I guess I was thinking, I guess I'm still thinking about this a little bit like a businessman, is that, you know, you're getting a payment in, you always have the choice to not accept that payment, to just, you know, give it a drawer veto and put it in a drawer and let it go away. On the other hand, if you want it, cash it. So I guess, I'm open to the idea from the, that was brought forward by Commissioner Thomas, of not restricting it to 90 days. I guess I would need to hear ideas about how far we go. 120 days, that adds another 30 days, so that means they got four months, our resident would have four months in order to cash it. I suppose there is a very practical administration question before us though of how long? How long do we leave these uncommitted funds in order to extend grace to residents whom are unique in the state of Colorado in getting a property tax refund? Because I just haven't heard any of our colleagues in any other county talking about doing refunds for property taxes. So I need to hear ideas in order to proceed forward.
Can I ask, Martha, so what's your deadline for us to authorize this item?
We won't be transmitting to the bank until, you know, first part of May, but they do need to be able to print the checks. So I would say there is a slight urgency, but we could delay it for a work session too.
Delay it for a work session. Okay. Pending further discussion and based upon the input from staff and the discussion from the board, I'll make a motion and certainly would welcome discussion on the motion for us to remand this item back to staff with the direction that you adjust the provision in question to 150 days instead of 90, and then help identify a mechanism by which citizens do not lose their tax refund.
I appreciate your additional statement that there's a way to, you're asking to identify a way so citizens do not lose their tax refund, and I will second that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I don't know, guys. I think, I mean, we could do that. On the other hand, we could just have the discussion now and decide. It's two numbers or three numbers. The two numbers right now is 90 days, or we decide 150 days. On the other hand, I appreciate the nature of the motion in that's asking for staff to provide comment because we may keep it at 90 days after staff provides the additional information. Any other discussion?
You know, it just seems unfair to me because our government is different than most governments. We do everything we can to benefit our residents. And if somebody has been spending the summer in Maine because it's too hot here, and then they, you know, things, life happens. And if somebody walks in in February with their check and they want to get their money for their property tax refund, I would like us to be a benevolent government and make possible their request. That's what I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, anything further?
No. No, none for me.
Okay. Well, there is a motion and a second on item I. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'll go ahead. I accept the argument. That's an aye from me as well. That passes 3-0. Okay, so I, item I has been removed from the consent agenda. And Marshall, you have your, Martha, you have your direction. Thank you. Item I has been removed from the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request on all items A through AD and items AF through AH and item AK of the consent agenda. Items AE, AI, and AJ are removed from the agenda.
Point of order, just to also note, can you amend your motion to also note that I has been removed?
I will.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that amended motion.
Okay. We have an amended motion on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And consent agenda passes. Okay, let's go into our regular items for this agenda today. And we have a, and, and I had to shuffle all my papers, but that's okay. That's why we have a consent agenda. We do have an item for parks funding agreement between Douglas County and the city of Lone Tree in the amount of $300,000. Luke Thornton, Parks Program Coordinator, Department of Community Development, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Luke Thornton, representing Community Development. The request before you today is to approve the parks funding agreement between Douglas County and the city of Lone Tree. On May 3, 2023, Lone Tree submitted a Parks and Trails Open Space and Historic Resources Funding Application requesting $300,000 for design development and construction documents for High Note Regional Park. Lone Tree and South Suburban Parks and Recreation are contributing $600,000 in matching funds. The request accounts for 33% of the cost and the matching funds covering the remaining 67%. The project was reviewed and recommended by the Parks Advisory Board as a budget request on June 12, 2023, and the Board of County Commissioners formally approved the request as a part of the adopted 2024 budget on January 9, 2024. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the parks funding agreement between Douglas County and the city of Lone Tree. This concludes my presentation, and I would like to turn this over to Austin Good from the city of Lone Tree. Also present today are Rob Hanna, the Executive Director of South Suburban Parks and Recreation District, Lone Tree Council Member Harmon, Lone Tree Council Member Anderson, South Suburban Board Member Eller, and South Suburban Board Member Barrett. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Good and Mr. Hanna.
Great. Thank you very much, Board of County Commissioners. I'm actually going to hand it over to Rob to do the intro, and then I'll jump in with Lone Tree piece.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Rob Hanna, Executive Director for South Suburban Parks and Recreation and a 27-year Douglas County resident. So couldn't be more proud to be a part of this team that's bringing this project to you. When we were at the Parks Advisory Committee meeting the other day, I described this project as a, as a project that's very unique, a generational project. Things like these just don't happen every day. It's not every day that you get a developer that donates 80, 90 acres of his development that they could build houses or shopping centers or anything like that. They just don't come along very often, usually only once in a generation. I actually have the opportunity to have two of these. Commissioner Teal, you are also a part of one of those, just a mile west of here, to give an example of something like that, in Phillips Miller Park. But these projects, they don't come cheap, and they don't happen without strong partners. And that's why South Suburban is so proud to be a part of this partnership with the city of Lone Tree and with the Douglas County Commissioners. So we are in full support of this request and seeing this project really come to fruition and seeing some really special things that we can offer the citizens of the north Douglas County area and the region. So again, just so proud to be a part of this process and a part of this partnership. So with that, I'll turn it over to Austin with the rest of his presentation.
Thanks, Rob. And again, thank you, Board of County Commissioners. We're really excited for this project and excited about our partnership with all of you. You know, one of the things we're really proud of is the location of this park and working with the developers to secure those acres, really right along Ridge Gate Parkway and I-25, right at Lincoln and I-25. I mean, this location, the prime central location for this park, along with its location adjacent to the East-West Trail and just the connectivity of it, right next to a light rail station. You know, it's one of those where the opportunity to build something like this in a location like this, I don't think is going to pop up very often. And so we're really, really excited about it. We're excited to really dive into the development of this design thanks to these dollars that would be awarded. And, you know, Rob was alluding to the Parks Advisory Board, which we've had the chance to present to. I think we've been back maybe three or four times now as we've actually been able to incorporate a lot of input into the design as well as through engaging with that group. And we're going to continue that effort even through the summer. And so one of the things that we discussed with our council and that we're going to advance, we're going to make sure is out there for all of Douglas County knows, we are going to be offering site walks of the project and of the site throughout the summer to get folks out there, get folks engaged with what's going on in that neighborhood and what's going to be happening on this really awesome park that's coming to the community. And so we'll make sure that the word is out. Took some inspiration from the Legacy Campus. If you remember, they were doing community tours while they were under construction there. And so we're excited to get the community out there. We're excited to really start diving into the design, really figuring out what this looks like. And we do have that other funding request that's pending through your Parks Advisory Board to get us moved along to construction, hopefully breaking ground in 2025. So again, thank you very much. And if you have any questions of any of us, we're happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Good. Thank you, Mr. Hanna. Rob, it's always good to have you around. Rob, it's always good to have you around. Chair recognizes Lone Tree City Council Member Mike Anderson.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. Mike Anderson, City Council, city of Lone Tree. This is really a special opportunity for the residents of Douglas County and the residents of Lone Tree. I enjoyed listening to some of the backgrounds of council members, and my background's a little unique also. I've, I've lived a life of active athletics and academia as well. Graduated as an engineer and volunteered to go in the Navy in 1966 when Vietnam was very active in our country. Served the country during the Navy and then came back and went to work for industry in the energy industry, working in multiple locations around this country, trying to provide necessary products in a safe way for the public. But all during my life, I've tried to maintain a balance between work life, home life, and health, and worked recreation to that. After I retired from Shell, I had the opportunity to go into public service and was elected to South Suburban Parks and Rec and served on their board for eight years, trying to provide amenities and programming to help the community, have the opportunity to do the things in life that help everybody to be a good, active citizen, to remain healthy, et cetera. And so when I had the opportunity to join Lone Tree City Council, I jumped at it because I just saw where the city was in terms of development and the value that the citizens of Lone Tree and Douglas County have on the value of open space and parks and trails and connectivity. And as we heard earlier in the discussion tonight, the connection to mental health in terms of this being a preventive type of facilities and opportunity for people in our area. So I am very proud as a member of the Lone Tree City Council, and I know Lone Tree City Council stands well behind this project as we try to build a total community to make sure they're providing the right sort of public facilities for citizens of all ages, youngsters to to join programming and learn about teamwork. And I fully respect your earlier resolution tonight about honoring older Americans. I can relate to older Americans. Thank you for doing that. We are still engaged, and we still want to stay active. And having these facilities in our community and in the district is very helpful to help us to continue to be engaged and to be productive citizens within our communities. So thank you for the partnership work that's gone on here in terms of bringing this project to this point. Money is an important ingredient in the process as we try to get everything moving forward. We thank you for carefully considering this request for funds, and we look forward to building a park out, a regional park available to all residents of Douglas County and the greater region in the near future. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mike. Thank you for your service to our nation in the United States Navy, and thank you for your service to your neighbors as a member of the, as the Lone Tree City Council. Let's go ahead, and questions from the board?
Well, I know we're running long today, and I want to thank all of our citizens for being here. I know there's a lot of business to get through, but this is an important one. This is in my district and the city I live in, Lone Tree. And just as a citizen, I want to thank really everyone here, and certainly Rob Hanna, your work and partnership with us for so many years has been deeply significant. And Austin, you're not just good, you're great. We hear that all the time, especially from Mickey Clark, our Strategic Parks Representative, Parks and Open Space. I mean, your contribution has been really significant. And council member, it's an honor, and thank you for your service. You know, this particular park really represents exactly what we're trying to do strategically with our new ballot measure, which is $330 million for Parks and Open Space over the next 15 years. And as just one commissioner, I often say iconic sense of place, monetized, an opportunity for for many to gather. It's not a shed in Larkspur. We love Larkspur to pieces, but I think about the location. It's just what you said, Austin. There will be millions of individuals that have the opportunity to recreate at this park right where they live, right where the density is at. And it does reflect upon our mental health and activity and all the great things that parks provide. So I'm really excited to see this come forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
In the interest of time, I'll reserve my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to do the same, and I'm going to open it up for public comment on this matter. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment on this funding agreement? And seeing none in the room, turning to Troy. Troy, do we have anybody online to speak on this funding agreement?
Thank you, sir. No online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Turning it back to the board for action, what is the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion to approve parks funding agreement between Douglas County and the city of Lone Tree in the amount of $300,000.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Well, Rob, I think we all know the importance of parks in our life in modern America, and so everyone, thank you for bringing this forward. I am supportive. And if there is no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimous. Hey, everybody who came for land use and public hearing, thank you for your patience. I realize we're running late. I assure you, we're doing really good work here. We're going to take a pause because we do want to capture a photo with members of the Lone Tree City Council and and Rob and Austin and the board to commemorate this event. All right, well, in keeping with doing big stuff here in Douglas County today, our next item on the agenda is an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of the Aurora Regional Navigation Campus in the amount of $1,125,000. Jen Eby, Assistant Director of Community Services, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jennifer Eby, representing Community Development. So the request before you today is approval of an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, with the city of Aurora for construction of the Aurora Regional Navigation Campus, or According, a little bit of background, according to the 2023 Point in Time Count, or the PIT Count, there were a total of 72 unhoused people in Douglas County. The 2023 PIT Count is our most current official survey of individuals who are homeless. And then in July, on July 10th, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners, or BCC, voted to partner with the city of Aurora by providing $1,125,000 in local American Rescue Plan Act funds towards the development of the ARNC. So that amount that was awarded was determined because it is commensurate with Douglas County's 2023 Point in Time Survey. With those funds, Aurora plans to purchase the Crown Plaza Hotel next month, and then will undergo renovations with the goal of opening the Regional Navigation Center in 2025. Aurora has raised nearly $40 million in state and local partner funding to complete this The property is located at 15550 East 40th Avenue in Aurora. It is near Chambers and I-70. The property is is close to employment centers such as DIA and the Gaylord of the Rockies Hotel. There is also an RTD stop that's at 40th Avenue and Chambers Road, just at the corner of the property. The navigation campus will serve unhoused individuals who are 18 years of age or older. It will be a low-barrier facility that will be operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and has a capacity of 225 rooms, with plans for at least 150 beds of emergency shelter. On site, the campus will provide food services, access to mail and telephone, transportation, laundry facilities, secured storage, and area for service animals and pets as well. This is just a sample of some of the services that are anticipated to be available on the campus. So as you can see, they plan to have an employment focus. They will have a full continuum of housing options, and they plan to include as well medical, dental, and a variety of behavioral health services. So the IGA before you today formalizes the partnership between Douglas County and the city of Aurora to address homelessness. In addition, Adams and Arapahoe Counties are also partnering in this regional solution. It provides access to the navigation campus to assist individuals who are unhoused, and this also includes five beds that have been reserved for Douglas County use. It also authorizes the use of the 1.125 million in Douglas County ARPA funds to contribute towards project construction. So with that, staff recommends approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Aurora and Douglas County in the amount of $1,125,000 for the construction of the Aurora Regional Navigation Campus, as it complies with our county, state, and federal approval standards and policies. We have with us today Emma Knight, who is the Homelessness Division Manager with the city of Aurora, and she's available to address any questions that you may have regarding this project. This concludes my presentation, and I am also available to answer questions.
Thank you, Director Eby. And Director Knight, any, any comment for the presentation?
I have several comments, but I'll hold them for following your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Emma Knight. I'm the manager of the Homelessness Division for the city of Aurora. I don't have a presentation to follow Jen's. I think she did a great job. Just wanted to thank you for having us here today and for considering this.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, thank you. So as founder and chair of the Douglas County Homeless Initiative, we are deeply honored to partner with you. I want to thank Jennifer Eby for doing such a fantastic job coordinating and really producing our homeless initiative for so many of our community partners. We're pleased to be one of only two counties in the state that has reduced overall homelessness, and we're very thankful for the hard work of our heart team, our co-response team that does such a great job of engaging with those that are unhoused. We are a housing-plus community. We really believe that it's not just housing, but those wraparound services and case management that are so critical to supporting the needs of the unhoused and ensuring that we're getting to functional zero, our pledge in the region. So I'm really excited about this for another reason. I know that the investment reflects our percentage of homelessness based upon that data point, and my thanks to Jen to, really for having the conversation and solidifying the arrangement so that I believe five beds will be guaranteed to Douglas County as a result of that investment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you. Is it director Knight? Is that the right term?
I'm a manager.
Manager. Thank you, Ms. Knight, for being here. When Jen was providing the description to us, she said these are low-barrier beds. Can you explain what that means and also the difference between the 225 beds and the 150-bed count, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So low barrier is a term used in the homelessness world, just to mean that we're not putting any extra barriers in the way for people to access basic services. So the very first, we're going to have a tier system, is how we've kind of been talking about it in Aurora. So that very first level, the emergency shelter beds, that is absolutely low barrier. We won't have any barriers such as sobriety or working status or things like that to that very first level. That second level will be a little bit more private, semi-private space, but still congregate sheltering for people experiencing homelessness. And to access that, folks will need to be working with the navigation center towards services and engaged in some way, and that will get them that that second level. And that third level would be those 255 rooms that we mentioned, and that will be for people who are actively engaged in the case management services and working towards getting into permanent housing and moving out of that space. And that's more of a transitional housing kind of model that will be a little more long-term.
I appreciate that explanation, and I thought it was important to have you put it on the record because I think we've seen lots of research and lots of models that work and models that don't work. And I think what you've talked about is a model that will work to help people become self-sufficient by moving through different layers of transaction between each site. So thank you for putting that information on the record, Emma.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment on this intergovernmental agreement. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Seeing none in the room, Troy, is there anyone online who would like to make public comment on this IGA?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for further discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of the Aurora Regional Navigation Campus in the amount of $1,125,000.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? I myself will say I think this is appropriate solution for us. I think we have had public discussion here in Douglas County about talking about doing a shelter option on our own. We heard loud and clear from our residents that that was not desired. So thank you, Aurora. Thank you for bringing this opportunity before us, taking lead on it for the region, and I am very much in favor of the passage of this motion. With that said, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that IGA passes unanimous. Thanks, guys. Okay, everybody here for the public meeting and for the land use meeting and public, the land use meeting and public hearing? We still have a couple more things, so please be patient. This is, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. This is the time. You are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to anything not on today's agenda? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anybody online who would like to make public comment?
I have no online comment.
Very good. Thank you, Troy. Turning it back to the board, Commissioner comments?
I do have a Commissioner comment. We have two very special guests. Stick around. I think we're going to do a photo a little bit later, but I'll turn it back to the, to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner comments?
I have no commissioner comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. My only commissioner comment today pertains to something we did a little earlier today. We attended the annual breakfast and meeting of the Douglas County Economic Development Corporation, and they have recently rebranded, and it was kind of a big announcement of the rebranding, because they used to be called the Northwest Douglas County EDC. And during it, the awards were also given to EDC and Chamber members, and why, by golly, they decided to give an award to the county as a community partner for 2023. So, congratulations, Commissioner. It's good to see our economic development work to be recognized by one of our EDC partners, and I wanted to share that news with everyone. Moving on to other business, the chair does recognize that there is other business before the board. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I recently learned that a new bill had been introduced to the state legislature. It's House Bill 4, I'm sorry, House Bill 24-1460. And after talking about this bill with my fellow commissioners, we did take a formal opposed position. Let me just summarize that to me, what this bill does is it requires law enforcement to do a higher level of reporting to fellow officers when they think or have a reason to believe something might have gone wrong. Having been with the Colorado State Patrol for 26 years, I have seen officers treat citizens in ways that were not appropriate, and we addressed those then. This bill goes too far, and I think it's important that we, that I'm bringing this forward because we have a fabulous Douglas County Sheriff's Department, and I don't want something like this imposed upon each and every one of them. And I do have the resolution, if it's all right for me to read it.
Please do.
Okay, this is the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, a resolution opposing House District 24-1460. Whereas Colorado's 12,000 professional peace officers serve in a single purpose, to protect the health and safety of all Coloradans, including their families and yours. Whereas Colorado's communities are served by highly qualified, highly trained officers, ready to respond to violent crime and emergency situations wherever and whenever they arise. And whereas Colorado's public safety professionals operate in a highly regulated, policy-driven environment, with well-established employment protocols and administrative and licensing requirements, and whereas Colorado has one of the highest levels of public safety oversight and data collection in the country, and was the first state in the nation to eliminate qualified immunity for officers, there are extensive guardrails in place to prevent and address police misconduct and hold bad actors accountable. And whereas with only 20 days left in this year's legislative session, and without any engagement with public safety experts from any law enforcement organization in the state, the House of Representatives introduced House Bill 24-1460, adding new rules targeting police who may or may not be reasonably aware of another officer's possible misconduct, appearing more punitive than solution-oriented, creating a new criminal charge for peace officers if they fail to report unprofessional conduct or misconduct of another officer. And whereas this bill unnecessarily singles out one profession, law enforcement, for prosecution, marking the first time any occupation would be subject to criminal penalties for failing to report speculative violations of undefined conduct, now therefore be it resolved, while the original intent of this bill may have been to ensure those who commit crimes in the workplace are held accountable, and that victims are protected from further harm, there are employment and criminal laws that already address these issues and provide civil and criminal penalties. And be it therefore resolved that the potential impacts of this bill are substantial and cannot be thoughtfully considered in the few days left before the end of the legislative session. Coloradans deserve a fair and comprehensive analysis and debate, weighing the gravity of criminalizing people for their, for their failure to report allegations of workplace misconduct for one profession. And be it therefore resolved that the Douglas County Commissioners strongly convey their opposition to House District 20, to House Bill 24-1460, and recommend that the Colorado General Assembly focus on the priorities and needs of the citizens of Colorado, and urge them to defeat House Bill 24-1460. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go ahead and, well, any questions from the board for Commissioner Thomas pertaining to the resolution she introduced?
I don't have any questions, but this was brought forward by Senator Leslie Herrid, and I just, I have to thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for, for calling out this particular bill. I received a number of messages from law enforcement and members of our community asking us to oppose this as well. States and cities that have taken an anti-police, anti-peace officer approach have suffered nationally, and I think about Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, that have become overrun with crime to a point that businesses can no longer operate at, at the level that they used to. Denver is no different, and I'm really pleased that in Douglas County, we have zero vacancies for our law enforcement at, at the sheriff's office. Law enforcement is supported here. Again, we've made a massive investment in peacekeeping in Douglas County. So, this bill is out of touch with the citizens of the state of Colorado, and I, I fully support the, the resolution in opposition.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thomas, I have no questions. You, you provided this to the board yesterday for review. I think it's spot-on, so I, I don't have any questions. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this resolution? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anybody online who wishes to speak on this resolution introduced in other business?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. Back to the board for, for the discussion or action.
If I could just add that I have been in contact with undersheriff Dave Walcher. I had invited him to be here to speak. Right now, he has his hands full dealing with the attempt to unionize the sheriff's department, so he said he could not be here. But I think this is important, and those from the sheriff's department here, I hope you carry the message that this board trusts you. We want you to keep doing what you're doing, and we are doing what we can to prevent from unnecessary regulation being foisted on you. So, thank you. And with that, I do have a motion to approve a resolution opposing House Bill 24-1460.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. I'll just say, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Laura. I think your analysis that you spoke to is straight, is right on. Thank you for working up this resolution with staff in order to bring it before us. Yeah, I, it Abe, I concur with your comments earlier. I mean, this is just not needed. It, it becomes a time of, do we have police officers, or, you know, do we not have qualified peace officers here in, in the state of Colorado? Do we trust them or not? And so, no, I think this is very appropriate. I think I see the, I think I see the chaplain for the sheriff's department in the back. I hope, Chaplain, you will convey the comments from the board when you work with our deputies. And I would say, if the board concurs, Doug, we should probably make sure this gets communicated, this resolution gets communicated to the sheriff's department, and perhaps our director of HR in our efforts that we're doing with the, the, the collective bargaining organization that we're seeing right now. Because I personally think this is, just like you said, Commissioner Thomas, this is us standing with our law enforcement, whether local, municipal, but more specifically, our sheriff's department members. Any further discussion?
Would it be possible for all three of us to sign this resolution?
Any problem with that, Jeff?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's, let's make sure that gets formatted properly upon passage.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. There is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. Again, thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for introducing. Okay. Now is the moment our county manager has a 30-minute briefing prepared? No, no, he doesn't. I, I, I know. Thank you again for your patience, everyone who's here for our next meeting. But the county manager, do you have a report today?
Just wanted to mention one thing that I know is important to the board, and that is to mark the passing of Sergeant Michael Duffy, who passed away last week unexpectedly and tragically after 25 years of service to our community. And I know the board proceed, was part of his procession. His funeral is a week from Friday at 10:00 a.m. at Southeast Christian. But also, just want to extend our condolences to everyone in the back, our friends in law enforcement, and a shout-out to Chaplain Ralph, who's been ministering to the parent, to the family, and, and of course, to Kevin and his family. So, I know that's important to the board, and, and just want to mark that for the record.
Well, thank you, county manager. I mean, obviously, everybody can see the business that came before the board today. You can see this is a working meeting, and thank you, Doug, for, you know, reminding us what is truly important when it comes to public service here in the county. All right. With that said, and we are running way late, let's adjourn. This concludes the business meeting for April 23rd. Next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, at 1:30 p.m. We are going to take a few minutes to reset the room for the next meeting. Board looks like we need, might need a quick break, and then we will proceed. We are adjourned.